All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance tonight, and I want to welcome you to the Temple City Council meeting for October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Current time is five oh five. Please rise as Mayor Prochem Judy Morales leads this in invocation, followed by our pledge, which will be led by City Secretary Dan Lou Ellis.
Pray with me, please. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity, for this meeting. We thank you for each person that is here today with us. We thank you for most of all for being here in our midst. Let your presence be made known and lead this meeting today, Father. We ask for your supernatural wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to be effectively be able to carry them out. Father, we pray for those who are in the office that govern the city, the community, our mayor, our city council, our city staff, and all those who work so hard literally in the backgrounds. We are thankful that we have the freedom to meet and to be able to speak up. Merciful God, we come to you in our weakness. We come to you in our fear. We come to you with trust for you alone are our hope. You place before us the pandemic that is present in our world today. We ask that you bring wisdom to the doctors, give understanding to the scientists, fill caregivers with compassion and generosity, bring healing to those who are ill, protect those who are most at risk, and give comfort to those who have lost a loved one. Welcome those who have died into your internal home. Stabilize our communities and unite us in a compassionate way and remove all fears from our hearts and let us be filled with confidence in your loving care. We pray for protection for all the first responders, our EMS, our police, fire, nurses, doctors, and all personnel protecting Father in their line of duty. As we meet and leave this meeting today, Father, surround us with your love. May we feel your love, know your wisdom and experience in your power. May we find the comfort we desire in you and the strength we need in your name. May your love be passion in our hearts and may your joy be the strength when times are hard. And may your presence be the peace that overflows in each one of us. Father, we love you. We ask all this to your most precious son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
The United States of America, the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. Now we'll move on to a public comments section of the agenda. Citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may do so. We ask that you step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit those comments to three minutes and no discussion or final action will be taken by the council. I have a couple of folks that have signed up. First is Gary Crane. Is that Crane?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Crane, thank you.
Cars three times. One was today. Two times they were right there. I could see their voices. I'm sorry, didn't see you. Luckily, there was no children in the roadway at that time. I motioned to come, but they did not come. But this, this, this area between seven and seven forty-five is really getting dangerous. People aren't stopping. I've had maybe more than twelve people come through, start coming through. They did stop eventually, but they went past the crosswalk. I have elementary kids there and junior higher that come during this time. We have daylight savings time coming and I just need your I have a couple of ideas. One of them is maybe get the media involved, maybe do a story on crossing guards and the dangers they face because I know a person died in Fort Worth this last couple, that's last month, a crossing guard did. So it's just maybe make the, the, the city aware of the things crossing guards have to go through. Like when I hold that sign up, that means stop, do not go. I make sure all the cars are stopped before I raise that sign. And then those three cars that came through, they already stopped and they didn't see me. They were looking at traffic. So my, maybe get the media to do a story on just crossing yards and maybe the things that the dangers we face and everything and protecting the young children coming through across the street. The other thing which I think is a good idea for Temple is my area and maybe other areas and the crossing guards have a lighted crossway. I've seen it in other states where you have a lighted crossway where they have a, a light, a button you push and it lights up the whole crossway. And the lights are embedded in the crossway itself. So that's a couple of ideas I have. Maybe have somebody come over and watch my area, maybe give me suggestions or maybe see the traffic flow during, again, seven to seven forty-five is the worst time.
Is it speeding or just simply an attention on the part of the drivers in your opinion?
They are stopped. Most of them are turning left from Tarver, going into South T Ridge, going to work probably. And they just don't see me. I mean, they already stopped. I, because I don't go into a crosswalk twice. See, everybody stopped. Raised my sign, I go across and I have a whistle for my kids. I blow it and they come across. And I have young children coming across and some of them, you know, are very you know, some are have needs. And so I have to really be careful with them.
Great.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Crane. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, next on the, on the list is Mr. James Furch.
All right. I've been up here a couple of times. So my name is James Furch. I'm in the building at twelve East Central Avenue. I've taken a little bit of time with a group of people I've hired to help me do this. I spoke on September sixteenth to our mayor, the day of the last city council meeting on the phone, who said I did not have asked to be on the city council meeting agenda and said he will not let me speak. In my presentation, which is going to be on the agenda here in a little bit, I have an email from City Secretary saying otherwise because I am limited on the amount of time our mayor will let me speak because I'm not praising the city council and not Turner Berenger Group. I have an email from Claire Anderson, who's an insurance company for the city of Temple. For the city of Temple's insurance company, who the mayor said made the decision on offering the five thousand dollars of damages to my building, not the city staff. He told me the city council had nothing to do with the process, only the insurance company, which again emails show different. Please pay attention to the emails when I get up to do the agenda. The insurance company, the city uses, only has a one-star review from vendors, customers, and businesses. The adjuster who they use also has the same amount of reviews on the internet and has complaints against the Better Business Bureau as the same thing. Poor reviews. Even the city attorney, sixteen minutes into September second city council meeting blamed the insurance company for the city agreement, not the city. I do not like being lied to or treated as though I'm stupid. At this point, I'm very upset and will go to all links to make sure all emails, videos, pictures, and every document has been sent to me or I've acquired from local business owners to go public. I even have an employee whose relative worked for the city of Temple taking pictures and videos of negligence for the sanitation department. Every property I can find with damages, I will make sure they are aware of their rights to file a claim against the city, which you will see damages to buildings next door to mine and have already helped them in the process of filing a claim against the city. The driver who hit their building on September twenty-seventh, who has been hitting mine for years, he did not even take the time to contact the owner, the city, the sanitation supervisor, otherwise, to let them know he hit the building. This is considered hit and run. And if any one of us had ever done something like that, we'd be in jail today. I promise to make this as public as possible. I would be contacting Turner Berenger Group and forwarding all my emails and information to them. We will see how many businesses I can make sure don't come to Temple. I don't believe in being bullied and as exact what the city of Temple has been doing to me. This has been going on since December of two thousand and twenty. And this is October and still no answer.
Very good. That was right in your three minutes. Now it's time for, if you would like, it's time for your public comments, which you now get five minutes.
Let me put it up on my iPad because so I printed wasn't deciding to work today, so I went and bought a new one and I haven't figured it out. So, ready? The first picture. No, this isn't what I just dropped off this morning. I dropped this off at twelve o'clock today. We did this already once. You deleted my files last time. Nope. No, it's an email from City Secretary. That's it. My time running out yet?
No, as soon as you get going is when I'll start your time. Won't you let me know when?
Okay, this email is from the City Secretary confirming I will be on the September sixteenth city council meeting. On September sixteenth, the mayor called me for a seventeen-minute conversation telling me I would not be allowed to speak. Next one, because I have to hurry because I got five minutes. September second, city council meeting, my pictures and videos disappeared, but when I spoke to the mayor on the phone, said the city council meeting might be nice and let me speak for six minutes. Yet after receiving city council meeting for the past year, as long as the speaker gets praised as city council, I've seen up to twenty-five minutes of speaking. Next. This email is from the insurance company letting me know the max they can give me for damages to my side of my building is a hundred thousand. Next. This email shows that city staff offered me five thousand to fix my building, even though the estimate was for one hundred and forty-five thousand, three point five percent of the actual cost to fix it. Let's put a perspective on it. If they damaged or tore up any of your cars and their car is worth forty-five, forty thousand dollars, they're going to give you fourteen hundred dollars to fix the damn car. Anybody going to get a car fixed, fourteen hundred?
Please address the council.
Fourteen thousand?
Address the council.
Okay, yeah, I got it. This picture, next one. This is picture where they moved the dumpster next door to my neighbor's property, approximately twenty-five feet. As you can see, the same driver was damaging the walls of my property and the city and has damaged water meter and the building, dropping it on and crushing the meter. The damage is just for the water meter. You're looking at approximately five thousand dollars. Next. This is an estimate I received on repairs to my building, one hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five thousand, not five thousand dollars. The guy who is the general contractor for the renovations of the professional building across the street from the Hawn estimated the, the cost to be over two hundred thousand, but you offered me five thousand. Next. The city has said I have no evidence that damages. My dumpster crushed up against the, the building. It's my dumpster against that building, my building. So each time pardon?
That's the city's dumpster.
Okay, got it. So each time that trash truck picked up the dumpster, it scraped the entire side of the building. Next. This picture shows the steel part of the lid that was bent so bad because they kept hitting the side of my building even after I said in December two thousand and twenty, it didn't get moved until April two thousand and twenty-one, almost five months later. When I called about the other, the dumpster moving for my neighbor, it got moved in four hours. Next. This is a video showing the trash. Nope, next. This is still the dumpster being moved over to my neighbor. There, hit that one. This video shows a trash truck moving around the dumpster instead of just picking it up and dumping it. Same trash sanitation working there has been hitting the side of my building for years. Yeah, he moves around. It doesn't just go up and straight down. Okay, next. So these pictures jump around because I actually own a business and I have to work. So this is Papelka painting. I paid for the outside of my building to be painted last week. It was over six thousand dollars. Next one. This is his estimate. If you can enlarge it, please. His estimate was for five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Next. His actual invoice, which is next, was six thousand three hundred and forty dollars. I guess I should have paid him three and a half percent. The city council decided that it all I have, that, that's all they have to pay for when somebody does work for them. So I think Papelka would really be pissed off if I sit here and offered him two hundred and twenty-one dollars after. Yeah, I see you looking at the clock. Two hundred and twenty-one dollars after I sit here and he did that work for me. Do you think he would be okay with that? I doubt it. So next. So when I asked for a breakdown of the cost and where they came up with the offer, I got an offer and it says it's a good faith offer. We're going to give you five thousand dollars. It doesn't say, but they're accepting acknowledgement that they did damage to the building. Next. This is damages on the side of the building. Next, please. This is Thornton Elementary School.
Please concentrate on your property.
Why is it, and why is it that that, that wall is damaged from the dumpster? It was stoned down on the wall, on the ground, and these kids are sitting here playing around. This was taken almost four months ago. It still hasn't been fixed. Nope.
No.
Let's go to the next.
Mr. Furch, you're
No.
At five seventeen.
You don't want to go to the next one?
Your five minutes is up.
Why would you let Turner Berenger go twenty-five minutes?
When was Turner Berenger?
I have sat here and seen all these people. I've gone through the city council meetings for over a year and you've let people
When was Turner Berenger here?
I'm just telling you. So it's okay. You don't want everybody to see what the city's doing. I've got emails from the city sitting here saying otherwise.
Well, then you should have worked on your presentation because your five minutes is
Okay, so what is your, what is your answer to solving this problem? Because you're not going to give me just five thousand dollars.
If you don't want the five thousand, then that's absolutely okay.
Trust me, you don't want that.
It's been offered to you.
Five thousand is not going to cover a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of damage.
Would you like for me to go point by point?
Sure, because I've asked everybody and nobody can explain to me how five thousand dollars is going to cover a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of damage.
So
I spent six thousand just to have it painted. Oh, no, I'm not going to see you because I already figured that out. You'll drag it up because you're, you're appointed to the city and it could cost me seventy grand. So I'm just going to humiliate the city. I'm going to put everything I can to make sure Turner Berenger doesn't rent that Hawn Hotel. You done?
Boy, I tell you what, I can be. It's probably better that I be done. So thank you for your time. Mr. Furch. Much appreciated. All right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item number four. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one ahead. We'll move on to item number three, which is special recognition. At this time, the city council will, will receive a presentation from Stephanie O'Bannon, President and CEO of the United Way of Central Texas regarding the Texas Emergency Rental Assistance Program partnership with the city of Temple.
All right, follow. Thank you for letting me come and have a few minutes. I had visited with Nancy and Erin and the great team here just to have an opportunity to share a little bit about the program that you've allowed us to administer for the city. So I'm just going to take about forty minutes. They said that would be okay. So not really, a couple of minutes, just a couple of minutes. Um, next slide, next slide. Do I do this? I'll do the next slide. All right. Couple of quick, just a couple of quick things. This is a little snapshot from our annual report just to show you that we all went through a really difficult, still are going through a very difficult year facing the, the impact of COVID nineteen. Texas was special because we had the extra winter storm to deal with as well, really impacted our citizens and our businesses and our residents. But together, and one of the things I'm most proud of, most of you know, I have a long history in the area with Chamber of Commerce for over twenty years and now United Way, and I love community development. And one of the things I love about this area the most is that we do partner well together and we come together in times of need to, to serve, to serve one another. And so we were able to convene and partner and assess our needs very quickly. And one of the items that, that came about was you all allowed us to help administer the, the CDVG funds first for rent assistance, utility assistance, and we were able to help hundreds of homes that way. And then we moved on to the tear-up fund. I think that's the next, the next slide. So the tear-up fund was when we started, I don't remember when, Erin, but it's, it's April. And that, that program, as you well know, provides up to six months of rental assistance and applicants must be economically impacted by the COVID fund. We have two staffs that are dedicated to this process. We work closely with your wonderful staff, primarily Brittany and Nancy and Erin. We've been able to help twenty-five households with ninety-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars since, as of today, we'll pull those numbers. And then we have a little over forty-one thousand left and we have several applications still being processed. What, what, what led me to want to share just a little bit with you in person is this next slide. Because we get this a lot and this is real tiny print. So I'm going to read it to you really quick. And I may skip over some of it because it's kind of long, but this is the part that you might not get to see every day. And, and I wanted to share with you that, that the impact that this program and so many other programs like it are making on people's lives. And this one, this is a couple, an elder, older couple on the top one that just wanted to take, take time to tell us United Way and have had, how they are forever grateful that her husband and she were helped with the help that was provided by the rental assistance. And it went in to talk about their job struggles and, and their struggles with the unemployment piece, not that they weren't getting it, but they really wanted to work. And it was, they were having struggles finding it and God knew that you folks would not look down on us, but would treat us with respect and understanding and just want you to know how much we appreciate it. And then this next one was a single, a single mom with, with two kids. Oh, sir, right now the tears are rolling. Thank you for your due diligence. We are a one-income family. I have a son and they had some special needs. This really truly came through in their time of, of great need and looking for work and the work that, that we do at United Way and, and the city of Temple. That's the point I want to make is that, you know, this fund is what made this particular help possible. And I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us the privilege to administer it and to help families in our community on behalf of the city and, and United Way. We are grateful for the partnership that we're able to have and continue to help individuals. But like I said, this is the part that I want you to have because you all may not get to see the impact that you're making on, on the lives of our folks in need. That, one of the, one of the pieces in the first, first one that, that we've seen a lot is a lot of folks that are needing help right now. It's their first time to ever need help. Okay, so, and that's been real powerful. And they always tell us, you know, most of us, most of us are one, two, three financial crisis away from being in the same situation. And so it's, it has been humbling and a privilege to help folks that probably never would have ever had a need had we not had this type of event in our, in our communities. And so to be able to help them get on their feet back, you know, back, back even and back to work and that's, that's been a real privilege to be able to do. So thank you for letting us do that. The last slide is just our two-one-one. As you all know, we administer the two-one-one call center here. Just to give you an idea of what the center's been dealing with, this is on the corner here in Temple. You all know employees for, for individuals. In two thousand and nineteen, our total calls, you'll see a little over forty-three thousand, two thousand and twenty, over ninety-one thousand calls intense, right? And this year, we're already at a little over forty-eight thousand calls as of the end of September. And you can tell that those COVID questions are still two of the top five needs. And if you can see, the top three needs continue to be bills and food. And so as a community, those are things we continue to discuss, looking for solutions to, to, so that we can together move the needle. So thank you again for the opportunity and we appreciate the staff that works with us and look forward to more to come.
Stephanie, thank you for that. You're being, everyone up here knows that United Way is an invaluable partner with the city and you guys, obviously, this, this is what you're geared to do and based upon those numbers, y'all have been doing yeoman's work. So thank you for everything that y'all do for the citizens of Temple and really Central Texas, right? It's not just
You're welcome. It's our privilege and we appreciate the partnership.
Hey, before you, before you leave, I think Ms. Smith has a presentation, maybe something for you.
I just wanted to say something quick. As you all know, COVID nineteen pandemic has significantly been impactful and you know, affected many communities and particularly Temple. And it's been wonderful to partner with United Way. I just want to say a special thanks, Nancy Glover, Director of Housing and Community Development and her team, as well as Stephanie O'Bannon with United Way of Central Texas of what they've, these several different programs they've put together to really help our community out. And it's very, it's been very impactful. So just a true thanks to you both for all of your hard work.
Wow, thank you.
Thanks, y'all. Thank you again. All right, moving on. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted in one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and will be considered separately. Council discussed the consent agenda during workshop and council, unless anything has changed. I don't believe that we're going to pull anything from the consent. Is that correct? Right, then I will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items five A through five X. Have a motion by Councilmember Long. We have a second by Councilmember Walker. Council, if you would, please cast your vote. Item five passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item six and seven, we'll take those together. Item six reads Item six reads, uh, it's a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a rezoning request from agricultural to planned development, general retail with the development and site plan and the conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption where the gross revenue from alcoholic beverages is seventy-five percent or more of the total gross revenue on a property located at four eighteen Hilliard Road, described as the Fernandez Edition, Block One, Lot Two, on the west side of Hilliard Road, south of Stone Hollow Drive. And then item seven is also the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a rezoning request from agricultural to general retail districts to plan development, general retail with the development site plan and the conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption where the gross revenue for alcoholic beverages is seventy-five percent or more of the total gross revenue on three point nine one plus or minus acres located at four thirty Hilliard Road, described as a Fernandez Edition Block One, Lot One, and four point eight two plus or minus acres located at five two zero Hilliard Road on the west side of Hilliard Road, south of Stone Hollow Drive. Mr. Chandler.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This presentation may actually be shorter than the description. So when you look at the map, you can see an orange and then a a piece of green, uh, the two zoning cases, they're both uh contiguous on the west side of the outer loop. And on the right, you can see the eight point seven three acres and then the point nine one acres fits right into, uh, the eight point seven three. And so essentially, this is an expansion of the Westfield Master Plan. And so it would match the zoning, match, uh, the PD standards, uh, including allowing food trucks and farmers market, outdoor theater, um, vertical mixed use. And also including the conditional use permit for on-premise, uh, consumption of alcohol. And so the three pieces of property, you can see what it looks like today, and there's a residence on each of them currently. And then the neighboring properties to the north, uh, so you have the veterinary clinic that's under construction. It's also, um, blissful acres, uh, plat. And then going clockwise, you can see to the south Members Parkway, public road that is already under construction. So this property would have access from it. And then to the west, um, primarily open space and then a residence across Hilliard or the Outer Loop to the east. And in terms of the future land use plan, uh, corridor or mixed use, but also it's on the edge of an activity center. And, uh, the Outer Loop is a major arterial. And just a reminder that this is one of the new categories within our comprehensive plan. And it promotes a mix of uses and walkability, and that's exactly what is proposed for this development. And so sixteen notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet. Uh, seven were returned in agreement. And one of those included, uh, from the applicant and and none in disagreement. So staff recommends approval of the request, uh, including for the conditional use permit for on-premise alcohol consumption for seventy-five percent or more of the total revenue, uh, which also would include compliance with, uh, chapter four of the Code of Ordinances and section five three fifteen from the Unified Development Code. Um, also allowing, uh, the following uses that, uh, were previously mentioned, um, but also multifamily dwelling, uh, three, uh, which would allow it to five stories in height. But once again, vertical mixed use, um, and the the density that is proposed by the comprehensive plan. And elimination of the, uh, temporary use permit requirements for the farmers market. If a farmers market is located here, then, um, then it would be a permanent farmers market and not a temporary use. Also, the uses identified under general retail, allowing them uh, buffering the uses from within the subject property. It's a master plan community. It's mixed use. So not requiring buffering from residential to retail, et cetera. A six-foot wide sidewalk along the Outer Loop frontage. Um, and then lastly, a sidewalk or trail that would be provided to connect between, uh, Hilliard or the Outer Loop um, and the adjacent, uh, roadway, uh, on the backside. So at the September twentieth meeting, uh, PNZ recommended seven to zero approval with those conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I guess it would be two different.
Yes, sir.
Actions.
Yep.
Chandler, can you show us the the Green Hollow connection? I'm not sure how that ties.
Yes, sir.
If you have a.
I can show. Well, okay, so there. So if you look at the south, uh, the south photo, Members Parkway, Members Parkway under construction now. And so that roadway will is connecting Outer Loop to Green Hollow. And then in terms of the last condition would would require, because of course, on the backside of the orange, that is all part of the Westfield Master Plan under same ownership. And so the applicant agrees to provide a trail connection. But, you know, within all of that retail, it's all, if this gets approved, it would be all planned development, general retail. And so there'd be a future trail connection through there, um, at a at a location that makes sense to provide that connectivity.
Thanks for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Council, anything else for Mr. Chandler? All right, both items six and seven are subject to a public hearing, and we'll do both of those public hearings at the same time. So um, if you would like to speak on this matter, um, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record or, um, raise your hand on the virtual platform so we can, um, hear what you have to say. No one on the platform? Okay, and there's no one in the audience? All right, then I'm am going to close the public hearing on both items six and seven. And I'll entertain a motion for approval on item number six.
Mayor, I move for approval of, uh, item number six, the rezoning request, uh, as outlined by the staff report.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Williams, and we have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Morales. Council, if you would, please cast your vote on item number six. Item six passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item number seven, um, I'll entertain a motion for approval on item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item seven, seven is presented by Mr. Chandler.
Have a motion by Councilmember Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Long. Council, if you would, please cast your vote. Item seven passes five votes to zero. Item eight is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a zoning change from ag to planned development, single-family detached, I'm sorry, single-family attached dwelling two with the site development plan on five point two nine plus or minus acres addressed to seven fifteen South P Ridge Road. Mr. Chandler.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council again. And so if this sounds familiar, it's because this is a second phase of a recent rezoning, um, at South P Ridge and and Tarver. And so, um, and it's good timing, the discussion with the crossing guard about, you know, visibility and and, um, tho- those kind of challenges, got the school across the street. Um, and if this is approved, you'd have townhomes and probably quite a few more children using that, uh, that intersection. And so here's, this on the north side, phase two. And so this phase consists of, uh, five point two nine acres and includes fifty townhomes, which would make a total of eighty-nine, uh, when you include phase one. It also would include, uh, sidewalks along the public streets, the of Tarver and, uh, P Ridge, but also internal circulation sidewalks. And then on the backside, along, um, a future trailway, uh, that is proposed in part of the Parks Master Plan. And they've, they're also proposing, uh, to have, uh, street trees for shade along those sidewalks. And then you can see what those um, townhomes would look like, the elevations on the left. And so six notices were sent, uh, to property owners within two hundred feet. Uh, and one was returned in agreement, and we did not receive any indisagreement. So here you can see, uh, Purtle across the street. As we go clockwise, you have the, um, Von Rosenberg Park, Public Park on the other side of the drainage way or or creek area, and then a private, uh, pool. That's part of the Hills of Westwood. And then the area facing east, and then you can see the creek and drainage area. And so staff is recommending, uh, the following proposed conditions, uh, substantial compliance with the site development plan, uh, compliance also with the single-family attached to standards. Uh, a maximum of four attached dwelling units, uh, together, with the exception of one on the site plan that I can show you that because of kind of an odd location, uh, six made sense at that, um, that part of the plan. Also, six-foot sidewalk along South P Ridge. Tarver already has sidewalks. Two-inch diameter breast height, uh, trees every fifty feet, um, al- along the public streets. Minimum of two parking spaces for dwelling unit, HOA maintained, uh, private park and common areas. And then the last one, allowing, uh, me as the planning and development director uh, to administratively approve minor site plan adjustments. But one of those that I've I've highlighted here, because we're still in discussion with the applicant and parks related to the private park that is proposed, that I'll show you in a second. Um, or whether they meet park requirements by paying, uh, the fees that would go into either the trail system that's proposed along the creekway or Von Rosenberg Park. So the long way of saying, uh, asking for authorization, if that is something that Parks agrees to with the applicant, to change how the park fees are addressed, that it not have to come back, uh, to city council. And so I'll, I'll show you the site plan. Let's see where, where did that site plan go? Oh, there you go. Um, so there's a top right above the FY twenty-one is a proposed private park in the middle of the neighborhood. Um, and so you've got Von Rosenberg Park next door. And so still trying to figure out what makes the most sense for the neighborhood and the community. So I'd love to have the opportunity to not have to bring it back to council if it's decided that park fees will be paid. And if they decide to put in what would appear to be about four more, uh, townhomes. So that would make ninety-three. Um, so that is what condition eight is asking for, is to work on that administratively, uh, between the applicant and parks.
The payment of a park fee is not at all out of the ordinary.
Correct.
Do this all the time.
That, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. But it would, it would affect the site plan since they're showing a
Right.
private park right now. And so staff recommends approval of the request, um, with those conditions and and so did planning and zoning by a vote of seven to zero at the September twentieth meeting. And happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chandler. Counseling questions for Mr. Chandler on item number eight?
You're saying that if, if agreement comes, the private internal park will not occur but a connection to Von Rosenberg Park will occur plus the fees?
Uh, perhaps, uh, if, so not, not sure about the connection of Von Rosenberg Park because it's separated by a drainage, uh, channel. But that, so that, I know that has been discussed some, you know, in terms of trail location. Um, so that, that's a, it's a possibility. But essentially, just being able to work with parks, you know, if it's agreed that park fees are, um, is is the route to take. And those park fees can either be applied to Von Rosenberg Park or part of the trail or even a connection, uh, to the neighborhood. Across the drain dairy, a bridge.
Anything else? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this, uh, item may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record or raise your hand on the virtual platform. No one on the platform and no one from the audience. So I will close the public hearing on item number eight and entertain a motion for approval.
Prove the rezoning request as outlined in item number eight for staff recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Williams and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Morales. Council, if you would, please cast your vote. Item eight passes five votes to zero. Item nine is a, uh, first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a rezoning request from single-family one to planned development, single-family one in the historic district zoning overlay located at six eighteen North Thirteenth, described as I M Cheatham Edition Block zero zero two, Lot zero zero two on the west side of North Thirteenth Street, south of West Garfield Avenue. Mr. Chandler.
All right, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is also a planned development, but is very different than the previous one. Uh, the only reason you're seeing this as a rezoning is that the applicant, uh, is requesting to expand an accessory dwelling unit, um, which is consistent, uh, with the neighborhood. Um, but the expansion really required, uh, rezoning just because of the the urban nature of this neighborhood than the historic nature. So, um, here you can see where it's located on the west side of North Thirteenth Street, um, at Garfield. And once again, it's in the historic district overlay. And so here's the site plan that has already been submitted for permit, um, has gone through historic review for compatibility, uh, with the design and the historic district and has been given a thumbs up. Um, and so once again, it's a single-family detached home that was built in nineteen eighteen. And it has a, an existing, uh, detached garage, um, and accessory dwelling unit that's single-story. They want to go to two stories. And it does not meet the current setback requirements of single-family one. Um, but you find a lot of that in older neighborhoods. So thus the planned development. And once again, it has been issued a certificate of appropriateness for its compatibility for the historic, uh, character of the neighborhood. And on the right, you, at the top, you can see, uh, the garage, single-story, um, not attached. That's a a, a fence or a gate. And so they are proposing a breezeway to connect the garage and add a second story, uh, so that it's it just a larger accessory dwelling unit. So eighteen notices were sent out. Uh, six were returned in agreement. And then there was one in disagreement, uh, a couple lots over on Thirteenth Street. And so on the, um, top left-hand corner, you can see facing north what that looks like, uh, the east view as we go, uh, clockwise. And then west, and in that west photo, you can see the single-story garage uh, to kind of the left and in the edge of the, uh, the main structure, and then the south view. And so staff recommends the following conditions, and that's substantial compliance with the site plan and elevations. Minimum of two parking spaces per dwelling unit, uh, which their site plan does include that. Um, installation and maintenance of gutters on the garage. As, as, as we indicated, it's four and a half feet from the neighboring property already. They're not going to go any closer. But in terms of ensuring that water doesn't pour off the, uh, the gable of the garage onto the neighbor's property. Chances are, they've been receiving water from the neighbor's property for years now, but this would, um, help improve that situation. Also, compliance with the certificate of appropriateness. And then, uh, standards from single-family one would be applicable with the following exceptions, the rear yard setback of four foot, three inches, which is the current setback. And the continued, um, use, allowing that continued use of the accessory dwelling. And PNZ recommended, uh, on September twentieth, seven to zero for a unanimous recommendation. And happy to answering questions.
Thank you. Counseling questions? I drive by this one every morning coming to work. They're busy.
And so you know that they've had a flat work permit that was, that was issued so we could allow them to, you know, not be on hold, you know, they had contractors ready to go. So they, they were able to, to do a lot of work and make it somewhat seamless.
Yeah. And they, they haven't begun to go up yet. So they're in compliance.
Yes, sir.
I just tattle on my neighbors. Sorry. Um, no, they're, they're fine. They're fine. All right. Very good. This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this? Adam may do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record or raise your hand. They're being neater. I will entertain a motion on item number nine.
Make a motion to approve item nine.
Have a motion by council member Walker, second by council member Long. Council, please cast your vote. Item number nine passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item 10 is a first reading in another public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a city initiated rezoning of approximately 8.015 plus or minus acres from Ag to light industrial located at the William Haddon survey abstract 392 and the Mercer Phalen survey abstract 659 part of 25.903 plus or minus acre tract addressed as 16, I'm sorry, 11601 Northwest HK Dodge and Loop. Mr. Chandler.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So we go from the historic district to the industrial park. And so this is really just cleanup of a TDC owned property to get it ready for future prospects. Part of it is already zoned light industrial and this remaining portion is not. And so takeaway here is you can see the, kind of the trapezoid piece of property in, in the yellow that's in green, it's owned ag. And you can also see that the purple indicates some future land use plan industrial. So certainly compliant. And three notices were sent out. One returned in agreement. That was actually from the owner TDC. So that's all that we received. And you can see vacant property. The staff recommends approval of the rezoning. And so did PNZ on September 20th. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counseling questions for Mr. Chandler? Not I'll open the public hearing. Raise your hand on the platform or step to the podium. There being none, I'll entertain a motion on item number 10. Have a motion by Mayor, by Mayor Pro Tim Judy Morales, second by council member Walker. Council, if you would, please cast your vote. Item 10 passes five votes to zero. Item 11 is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the voluntary annexation of 65.233 plus or minus acres of land located on the north side of FM 2483 approximately 2,141 feet west of its intersection with State Highway 317 in Temple's Northwest Extraterritorial jurisdiction addressed as 9918 FM 2483.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. You can see the, the property on the left with the, the blue boundary. And you may notice that it's directly across the street from Lake Belton High School. And what you also, it may be difficult to see, but there's also a little strip of property between our city limits, the kind of the cloudy white and then the blue. And that is actually property that these same folks have under contract and also intend to request voluntary annexation in the future. So just keep that in mind. And so we've done a lot of these lately. I don't need to go over all the bullets, but compliance with chapter 43 of the statute has been confirmed. Including written notice regarding any fiscal impacts that are required by the statute. And BIST and Morgan's Point and Bell County have all been notified. BIST is the only one with the fiscal impact. And the municipal services agreement was circulated, all relevant departments and no issues were identified. And staff recommends approval of the voluntary annexation. And we would expect a rezoning to come forward at any time in next six months or so probably.
We're good. Thank you. Counseling questions? This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? All right. There being none, I'll entertain a motion on item number 11.
Mayor, we approved the voluntary annexation as outlined in item number 11.
Have a motion by council member Williams. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Morales. Council, please cast your vote. Item 11 passes five votes to zero. Item 12 is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance mending the city's code of ordinances, chapter 38, water sewer and sewage disposal to incorporate a substantial modification that integrates revised technically based local limits for the Dozier Farm wastewater treatment plant to the city's pre-treatment ordinance and program. Mr. Moffett.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is some edits to chapter 38, as we previously said. It specifically focuses on industrial pretreatment and specifically on our Dozier Farms, Dozier Farm wastewater treatment plant. This is part of a process called a T bill, our technically based local limit. I'm going to call it T bill. So we're not here all night. As I say that over and over again, but it's really a three part process. We study the local limits. We revise some of the forms in the pretreatment program. And then we revise the city's ordinance to match that program. And that's what we're here to do tonight. Let's modify that ordinance. Some of the ordinance changes are to update, clarify verbiage from current regulations for current regulations and current practices. So just some housekeeping there. One major change is also just really a big house cleaning, house cleaning item is changing temple from Dozier Farm in this ordinance. It confuses all of our industrial users. That one's called the temple belt and the other one's called temple. So we're going to call it Dozier Farm. So those are some house cleaning, cleaning items. The technical changes are here. The study looks at what we currently have discharging and makes some assessments on which pollutants are a threat. Some of the good things is that we were able to remove those, 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 uh, those items, TSS, COD, hydrogen sulfide, et cetera, from being regulated because they're not considered a threat anymore. So that's good news. Some of the other pollutant limits were updated, I've updated either upward and downward. Those pollutant limits are largely to do with metals and things of that nature. And that just matches kind of what's being done federally there. And then we also revise the reporting measures from a maximum to an average, which gives more flexibility with our industrial users. And it's a little bit easier to, to handle. So the, the reason we're doing this is right here. This is the benefits of, of this process. We're increasing our maximum available industrial load. We call it MAIL. As a result of this, currently it's 3794 pounds per day. In loading at the plant, we get able to upgrade that to 6,488 pounds a day. So it's a significant increase. That's done basically through reassessing the residential and industrial components of the tributary areas of the plant. Another big change we're able to make is not counting industries that discharge at residential levels, levels or lower against our MAIL. So that freed up another 1,650 pounds of BOD per day. So that's almost doubling what we can put into that plant. Through administrative work, just basically getting our homework done, getting everything for TCQ. And we've already talked with TCQ, they okayed us to come to council and talk about this. They really expedite this process. Sometimes it takes a couple of years. They did it 11 days, which is impressive. So kudos to TCQ for streamlining this. And then our consultant has done an excellent job, very impressive. With this enforcement becomes very important. Just because we're, we have to watch what's going on as we're, you know, freeing up more things to go to the plant. We just got to make sure that everybody follows the rules. So we don't upset the plant. So that's kind of a quick overview of it, kind of fast. But if you have any questions, be happy to answer them for you.
Didn't really understand any of that.
Can you remind me what BOD stands for?
Yeah. Biochemical oxygen demand. It's a, it's a pollutant basically in sewer. That can upset, that can upset the plant. So you have to limit that to a certain amount so that your plant can function.
flooding limits not, will not be considered, will now be considered non-contributory. But industry is distributing, or discharging very different things than household. But how does that add up?
So this will account towards the BOD loading only. All those other things that would be typical of industrial users is still enforced. A lot of those users have federal limits that are above these local limits. So those would still be in effect. And then also the other local limits would still be in effect as well.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Item 12 is subject to a public hearing. Okay. There being none, I will close the public hearing on item 12 and entertain a motion on item 12. Have a motion by council member Long, a second by council member Walker. Council, if you would, please cast your vote. Item 12 passes five votes to zero. Item 13 is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing a guaranteed maximum price proposal to the construction manager risk agreement for the construction of two downtown parking garages with Spa Glass Construction Corp. of Houston in the amount of 17 million, 174,676 dollars. Oh, there you are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you mentioned, this item is consideration for guaranteed maximum price, which is actually the vehicle by which we would authorize the construction of two downtown parking garages. A little reminder on your timeline, you previously awarded a construction manager at risk agreement with Spa Glass in February. As we go through that, the process from there has been that they've reviewed plans that operations with our consultants and worked through those plans. They received proposals from their subcontractors or contractors as it's being called here. And, and they have formulated what we call a guaranteed maximum price, meaning that they're saying for that price, they will build parking garage or two in this case. The reinvestments on board met yesterday and voted to recommend the city council approval of a CMAR guaranteed maximum price in the amount of 17.17 million. Then today we're here before you again recommending that award of that contract at just under 17.2 million. If we do so tonight, then expected completion of those garages or substantial completion at least would be anticipated in September of 2022. A little bit of a reminder, location wise, you see the first, what we call the first street garage just south of Avenue A along First Street. Rendering of what the anticipated exterior would look like on that garage. Moving to the fourth street garage, just on the north, northeast corner of Fourth and Central. You have a fourth street garage across from Hon Arcadia Development there. And a rendering of that same fourth street garage that's under consideration. So the city staff and the reinvestments on board are recommending that we award that guaranteed maximum price in the amount of 17 million, 174,676 dollars. One thing to note in particular there is that, that, that price does include a contingency amount in just over $750,000. That contingency is owner controlled, meaning that it's subject to authorization when being used by the city. And any unused contingency at the end of the project would be returned to the city as well. And that's there for any kind of unforeseen circumstances that come up during construction. As you're all well aware, any construction project has those hiccups that come up along the way that are unforeseen and that would cover those costs. So I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
How was the, the contingency dollar amount of life at just 4% of the contract?
Right.
It actually is 5% or very close to 5%. We had to round it down.
And the completion date, is that an accelerated construction timeframe or is that just they can get it built in less than a year?
That's, we've anticipated all along about an 11 month construction process. So subject to an award tonight, we would anticipate construction beginning early November. Construction early November and completion, substantial completion in September of next year.
Do we know how many parking spaces total, remember?
I believe there's 415 in the fourth street garage and I'm going to look at David Patrick back here. It's two, 270 two, 265, 235 in the first street garage.
Which one is going to kick off first? I think that's been a competition. Okay.
So how does that completion time align with the Hon completion time?
Garage ahead of the Hon Arcadia.
Uh, how much?
I, I don't have a definite number, but probably about six months, most likely.
Okay. Very good. Counseling, anything else for Mr. Olson?
Interesting. How did you select the fourth street garage to be the first one?
They're, they're technically moving at the same time, but just from a mobilization standpoint, it makes sense that some of the components in the fourth street garage are, are able to move a little quicker than some on the first street garage. So and as they mobilize, we'll see slight move ahead on the fourth street. Realistically, they'll be virtually the same.
Very good. Another landmark project for sure. Two projects really.
One of you has got to have some balloons.
Those are outside.
Air and flowers.
All right. Very good. That's, that's all very exciting. If there's no further questions for Mr. Olson, I'll entertain a motion on item 13.
I make a motion for approval.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Judy Morales, who these projects happen to be in her district. And we have a second by council member Walker. Council, if you would, please cast your vote. Item 13 passes five votes to zero. Item 14 is to consider adopting a resolution appointing members to various boards and commissions. Council, obviously you're aware of the change we made to the policy and this allows us to add a few additional people who were interested, but based on past policy would not have qualified to participate on these boards. So the four, I'm sorry, the three new appointees are to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We will appoint Kat Kaliski to an unexpired term ending March 31st, 2024. To the Emergency Services Advisory Board, we will appoint Nanette Pace to an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2023. And to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will, we will appoint Clinton Weaver to an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2024. Counsel, if you don't have any comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion on item 14.
I move, we adopt item 14.
We have a motion by council member Williams. We have a second by council member Long. Council, if you would, please cast your vote on item 14. Item 14 passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item 15 is to consider adopting Moving on to item fifteen is to consider adopting a resolution appointing a member to the Temple Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. And councils, we discussed in workshop, we had a number of good candidates. We settled on appointing Mr. Tony Hale to the Temple Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Again, if there's no comments, I'll entertain a motion on item fifteen.
Item fifteen.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams and we have a second by Councilmember Walker. Please cast your vote. Item item fifteen passes five votes to zero. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting at six fifteen and we are adjourned.